Sample one. You know, in the South Shore. There's a gigantic oil slick.
I don't know. I like it all.
Yes. Something from a human.
I think that includes. Where was it?
Over the South Shore. There were.
I I I think they addressed it. It was on the, yeah.
Nine.
Nine thirty six, nine thirty.
Down from Jimmy.
Yeah.
My court has one of them. Well, there's a lot of work going on, so they might be pushing. They're pushing those pilings down. Yeah. They might. That could be changed. Piling jack. It's probably pushing shit out of the ground.
So. They had a little gauge like patrol they wanted to add to. Let's believe, but that's what it's. You know, it could be from.
Or they just blew a hose and it shot oil off to the lake, too. Unless it had any for days. But we'll see what it is. That's.
Yeah.
Basically, the child. Reggie Dennis, too. Yeah, you know, it's all so bad on the road.
Oh, wow. I'm glad there.
Think I need red data.
Here we go.
On.
That was.
Oh, grandpa. Boy, girl. Oh, we got a boy coming, too. The block of her.
Huge.
Yeah. Right, like we get the pictures and everything, but you know. He's moved. You know. I think I'm too sorry, that's been always. I'm like, okay. Yeah, then you wait, are they important?
No. Damn, where.
Oh, so not too sorry, though. You can get there quickly.
Damn, you damn where are.
Yeah. It's nice when you're driving.
Well, they're having baby.
Oh, they are. Oh, okay, so that's.
That's what was an apple. And. Yeah. Seven fifty. So. This fast.
Right.
Yeah. Everybody got over the lake field like. I must see the answer. I know. Yeah, we saw some of them.
Had their grandbaby.
I heard that there's. Yeah, with dispatch. You know, when you call that in. You're in. Yeah. Hey, Dan. Why do you get it as smart, you know? They say one less. Oh. That's the end of the thing here, the eighth year birthday. And. I wrote it. So I.
Oh.
I'll get around. Actually, Bert. I guess this. Problem. Someone like. Took the pressure off. I can't. It'll. Exactly. Run that tab under control by. That's just why you're not there, right? No, they never show. I think.
My dad.
Open words or something. Got out and use that. And then the police fire use one of their other padworks to get out.
Okay.
Oh. I'm not. They did. I'm getting. Get away from the ten there. They come from town and. Those drivers down down there. Which looks like these. They have some boat destroyers. As you get on that way.
Yep.
Otherwise, it's all marsh and. During the whole. Property.
You know, definitely. Five.
I didn't.
Why? Do we do a combine five?
No, say. Yeah. Like. Yeah, Japan. I think I've. If he hadn't been doing. I will wait with leave. There is a. Getting a little. Yeah. Probably. And it's gonna be. And the really thing. I was like. But it's not. Of course, they're very. Over there. And it's. Yeah. Pretty cool. I was in the spring of the year. It's frosty. Yeah. It's not. We'll have.
Well, very. When you open files. Combine this very bottom. On the main.
We're gonna add. Most of them.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you, Bert.
Get it right there.
Yeah, I'm on September nineteenth. Pulling up. Okay. A long time for Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
I didn't. Thank you, Robert.
I can't.
Ready, Robert? So we'll call the lead to order. Let's start with the pledge allegiance.
Like allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which we stand. One obligation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
I need to read the driver for soon instructions. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. And all the subs are coming with us on. Zoom, so when time allows it, go ahead and either use the chat or the reaction button. Um, to either raise your hand or ask your question, and we'll get to you as timely as we can and those that are with us. Remember, we have speakers in the ceiling, so. Uh, for recording purposes, it makes it easier if we keep the chat down unless you speak, so thank you.
Thank you, Robert. And we need to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. We have a motion.
Just garden hell move it. We approve the agenda.
We have a second.
I will second it.
So the first topic on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the August fifteenth council meeting. Are there any questions? Anything for any changes? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August meeting?
Uh, this is George again. I will move that we approve the minutes for the August fifteenth meeting as written.
And you were Nathan, you were able to give my updates and okay, so I would second.
And so now we have a motion, we have a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, approval of the minutes. Nathan, if you could go with polite author, register and warrant, please.
Yeah, uh, the. Well, this can be the September voucher runs from August fifteenth to September eighteen. Here was forty eight transactions on the general side for a total of seventy seven thousand, six hundred thirty seven dollars and ninety eight cents. A couple of things that stand out on the general side would be the selective insurance quarterly payment. That was on the twenty first of August. We had a DLZ payment um. On the first of September, that was considerable. Uh, everything else pretty standard. Uh, on the sewer side of things, we had sixteen transactions. For a total of forty nine thousand, four thirty four and fifteen cents. Uh, which brings a total for this voucher that I'm going to ask for approval of. To one hundred and twenty seven thousand, seventy two dollars and thirteen cents. And on the sewer side, if you will, uh. The sewage treatment was a considerable. Uh, charge for this month because that was pretty much the business. Month of the. Summers, that was twenty six thousand, five sixty six, that should be the largest. Uh, payment that we have to make for sewage treatment. But that's the main things that, oh, and also guys, uh, new heater. Uh, signal plumbing. Um, that was done out of the shower. Water heater, yeah. And that was paid out on the fourteenth of September. Let's purpose everything out of that.
Thank you, Nathan. Any questions for Nathan on the voucher? Do we have a motion to approve the voucher as presented?
George, again, I knew that we approved the uh, voucher register as presented.
And so Dan, I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to approve the voucher as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, it's approved. Now we'll go over to new business and we'll start on the twenty twenty four budget. And Nathan, I think you're presenting.
Yeah, so first and foremost, I want to thank. Uh, Dan and George, they were in the budget committee. Uh, we put a lot of. Time, effort and energy into this process. Uh, everything went pretty smoothly considering this is my first year with the help of Dan and George that really. Uh, helped everything out. Um, so the first form you're going to see up here is a budget estimate. For the twenty twenty four. Um, on. The right hand side, you'll see the published amounts. These are the amounts. For every line item on the tax levy side, so. Every line item has the amount that we're going to be appropriating for next year. Um. We didn't really change a whole lot, and on the next slide, I'm going to have the budget overview, which will have. Kind of the broad strokes of where the main differences you will see in the budget from. This year to next year. Um. So all of these reports will be on file. This is a report that was filed with the DLGF. As you see on the top there, um, this includes the general fund, the MVH. It does not include sewer funds. But Jordan did a really good uh, breakdown. Of those may have looked at well, if anybody in the public would like to see any of these. Different uh, breakdowns or reports, I have them all available here by office. Uh, if you want to keep going down, Robert. Um, there's. Two, two pages, and as you'll see on the second page, you'll see what. Uh, local income tax at the top. These are. Um, mainly for. Leaves and um, different things for. Uh, there's a couple of different things for uh, the system, that's the filling systems are. Then we go down to the NVH. This is more of guys. Uh. Funds and accounts. These are a lot of things that we're using for the street. Um. And it has a breakdown of every single line item and the appropriations. For them. So it's it's a really easy form to look at, and I'll have it on file here at the office, and if anyone would like to see it. You can always come in. Uh, if you want to go to the next. Slide rubber. Or to our next file. This is the overview. Um, so we interviewed all the different time department heads. This was all pretty much done through August. We had, I think, one meeting in September. Uh, the initial budget was loaded into the gateway worksheet assessment you were looking at with this first one that I showed you. Um. Then I had a initial budget review with George Hilton in front of the Department of Local Government Finance. That review went over very uh, favorably. So it was very uh, informative meeting for myself. Uh, being my first year, so he walked through everything, walked through all the different funds, and. We were on the phone for about two hours. It was a really good meeting. Um, then we're. We did a detailed budget analysis review. Um. And myself, Dan. And George went through that on August twenty eighth and. We implemented a few changes into the gateway worksheet worksheets. The final budget and analysis was conducted on September seventh. Right now, we're at the council review and approval of September nineteenth meeting. The final adopted budget will be taking place on the October meeting, and then after that, we will um. Publish it, and then it goes for final approval to the DLGF. So that's kind of how the process works. You wanted to the next slide. Twenty four budget considerations. The estimated inflation rate is two point three percent. Um, we'll see a better old steady next year's credit will be. Going down any anytime soon, in my opinion. Uh, change in the department expenditures. Public safety policies, procedures, management, subcontractor lexical, that's a new uh. Process that we talked about a couple of meetings ago with Chris and the. Uh, police force is going to help them with all of these procedures, things of that nature. Uh, we have the updated Fremont Fire Protection Contract that we're going to be signing tonight. So that'll be presented here in a little bit. Um, we did just get additional speed radar signs ordered. We got. Would we get to it? That was the radar sign. That was. Now that we're in. Tell me a replacement. Yeah, so we got. Today, uh, we also were thinking about doing a roadway tree trimming program. Um, that's something that guy and our new street worker Brody. Uh, I think that will really help out next winter when we have big storms and things like that. So that's something that we talked about. Um. EC and VCA member training. We went over a few different um. Options for those committee members to do additional training or put in funds for that. We do have a medical benefit reserve because we're talking about doing health checks for the town. Right now, that's kind of on hold, but we do have a medical reserve in place. So in the future, if we do decide to go down that route, we have those funds in place. Um, one of the things that we have not included in this budget, but we have talked about. Our up updating the comprehensive plan. This is something that probably. Needs to be looked at here in that few years. This is something that we've been talking about. Um, the cost could be substantial, so that's something that we're going to. Keep talking about, and you can. You know, come back to the other meetings as we move forward with that. Um, and then the bike for the deputies, we're still kind of. Figuring out that's going to be something we're going to continue because. The deputies dig it on right. Uh. Was it last weekend or maybe we.
Last weekend.
So that's something that we talked about as well. Um, and then we have an employee wage increase limited to three percent overall. The community crossing mansion grant road policy, where expenses are going to be. Uh, considerably less for next year and a few for the next. Slide. These are going to be the. Big um, places that we're going to see differences. In the general fund, the total dispersed spend. Um, is not going to be a whole lot of a change, but when you see the motor vehicle highway fund, it's almost a hundred thousand dollars. Um. Uh, losing the word I'm trying to come up with, but it's reduction in in a cost. Local road and street, uh, most of these reductions are going to be coming from the CCMG projects because we're not going to be spending quite as much money next year. As far as um, the estimations go, so you'll see that reflecting the local roads and streets at ten thousand dollar reduction. Law enforcement that was. Um, really touched. Local roads and streets. We just took that off because we didn't really have any expenses identified. Rainy day, we're not touching that. We're not. Uh, bringing any money out of that funds for leaving the rainy day uh, fund in place. At the end of this year, we're going to be adding to the rainy day fund with whatever funds we have left at the end of this year. So uh, we don't know what those, what that amount will be, but we're gonna get there at the end of the year. Um. Even the capital improvement, that changed a little bit just because of the cost sharing. Even capital development, that's one of you to see a big reduction because of the CCMG caution. Uh, we also um, don't have any easements or drainage planned, I believe, Dan. For next year as much as this year.
Right, the uh, the Lakeview uh, drive project doesn't have any demands for. Uh. Easements, uh, drain and any kind of, you know, drains or things of that.
So we're seeing a lot of road production and the cost of the CCMG production because of that. Uh, economic economic development. Um, we reduce the reserve uh, with overall CCMG road project reduction. About sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars reduction and and the major moves. Same thing, we reduce that by forty thousand funds used. For the CCMG road project twenty twenty three, no additional revenue is available. Uh, so the total reduction from this year until next year. Is a three hundred and thirty three thousand dollar deduction. So. I think on the next slide, or it might not be on this slide, this twenty percent. Reduction from this year to next year. We're going to try to make that work. Um, these are all estimates, obviously. Um. But that is. Kind of the overall broad brush strokes for. The budget. We have any questions?
Well, well, yeah, I don't know if Dan or George want to add anything.
I I I'll add a couple of things just to provide context. It's not like the uh, the three hundred and thirty three K. Reduction. Uh. You know, was deliberately made. One, one, one perspective to keep in mind. Is that last year we actually budgeted. Um. More aggressively because we effectively took a year off due to COVID. Uh, on expenditures, and so. We were making up last or this year. Um. Uh, for for some things that needed to be done from a capital improvement perspective, so those. Those would naturally go away. The improvements are in place and they don't need. You don't have any particular things that are needing done, so. That that was a large part of the reduction. So.
Or was there?
Uh, nothing regarding the uh, the numbers here, but just the the work that Nathan and Dan provided along with the department heads. Uh, was significant to actually make the budgeting out of these years, so I appreciate all the. Everybody really starts at the at the base of the organization and and grows up and and just appreciate the input and. Uh, what we see here tonight is the results of uh, everybody's input and Nathan and Dan's assistant pulling the numbers together.
And once again, this is my first year, so I want to thank you guys very much for all the help because uh. You know, this would have been a very overwhelming process without the help of. You know, these two gentlemen, my wife, so I just want to thank you.
Absolutely. And before we open it up to um, the public. One thing that I would like to do is comment on the tree trimming. I think that's great to see that added. Um, I did receive a call um, this week. For somebody that couldn't make it to the meeting to make sure that was in the budget. So um, I think we all know who that my phone call might have come from, uh, but thank you. And on on the Lakeview Road Project, I know we had some discussion at one of the other meetings on the bridge over there. Do we, would that? Increase what we need to put in the. Budget for that? No, we're all good on that bridge over there.
Yeah, that's a that's.
Okay.
County asset, so.
Whatever we went into, yeah.
Come out.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure because that was something that was discussed. So now that council is finished with our discussion, if we could have a motion to open it up for the public?
Yes, George, I know that we uh, opened the. Compliment to the public hearing.
And would I have a second?
Uh, Dan, I'll second it.
Thank you. Anybody in the public have any questions on the budget that was just presented?
I think the tree trimming is a great idea, too. There's a lot of trees that hang over the world quite a bit.
Anybody else?
I'll just comment on a tree trimming. A conversation that Guy and I had, it's it's going to be a recurring expense every year. Um. We don't have enough money uh, in the budget to go around the lake, uh, so. But he, this is enough money that once we get around the lake, it'll be able to maintain. Uh, the level of trees and the objective here is is the fifteen footer or greater for the emergency vehicle access, so. Um, it was a nice place to start and uh. Guys got to put the details to that program and do. Probably uh, some triage up front. No, no.
No. You're working on it, okay?
Yeah. That's sort of the line. But uh, yeah, yeah, addressing the 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 bad spots immediately and then.
No, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Me, oh, and I'm on account of GMA, where did the inflation number originate? It was provided by the state. Yeah, those numbers are okay.
Yeah, they're provided by the state. Uh, George Helen. Did a really great review. Uh, like I said, first, so. All of these reports are wild, so if anyone would ever like to see them. I have more, more worse violence than probably everyone will look at, so.
What?
Deal with it.
Anybody else in the public have a question or comment?
Just have a quick one. So what what's your date? What what do you receive yearly?
On the revenue.
Where what do you have work from?
So there is a revenue report that I have that shows a detailed list of every. Deposit or revenue source we have coming in. Um, I didn't include that in this presentation, but Danny, if you'd like to come over. Anytime, come on over.
I'm I'm just curious to how it balances, you know, are you in a positive or negative?
Yes.
Yeah, we we uh, came out. All the fun or all the accounts are going to be uh, in the positive with the sources of funding. From our tax levels, so we're not taking any money out of the rainy day fund. We're not taking any money out of any other sources. Everything is funded. By our revenues that we have coming.
Anybody else in the public? Yes, Kathy.
Um. Is the um, road work on Lakeview going to be the same approach? Um, and by that, I mean, are they going to tear it all up and start over?
What I'd like to do, Kathy, since we're just focusing on budget, maybe save that for when we have a road conversation and we can get into the specifics on that, if that's okay.
Sure.
Anybody have any other questions on the budget?
Yeah, I I do want to make it just a. Couple of comments um, with regards to the question about is it balanced? Uh, there is, the general fund is overrunning. Um. Which was partly why we decided not to go forward with the comprehensive plan activity. Um, and take a look at uh, that particular fund uh, receives a lot of miscellaneous income. Which is at our discretion as a town uh, to 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 modify. So the assignment that uh, will be undertaken is is to take a look at the fees in particular. That we're charging for um. Um. Permitting. Uh, in particular and other areas. And also whether now we expect to increase golf cart type permits and that. So that will help uh, balance it, but uh. Today, it's not balanced. Uh, the intent for this is to get it in a balanced state.
Anything else from the public on the budget? Okay, hearing none, um, could I have a motion to close public comment?
George, I think we close the uh, comment period.
And why the second?
I will second that.
Okay. Um, so all those uh, in favor of closing public comment, smoking by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. So now let's go to council. And we are, um, we need a motion to approve the twenty twenty four budget as presented by Nathan.
I think what we need is is a is a motion to proceed.
Oh, right, to move forward to the next phase, yeah.
Or if there's changes that uh, are being requested.
Do you want to make the motion, Dan?
So I want to make the motion to proceed with the with the budget as uh, as drafted and reviewed this evening.
And do I have a second?
George, I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Hearing none, we can proceed with the budget as presented. Move forward. Okay, next on. Okay, next on the agenda is the wastewater easement. And if I go with Robert and Dan.
No point, no point, systems contract, see, repeat.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the old one, thank you, Brent. Um so we are going to do the Peterson Capital Asset Management Engagement.
The Peterson Capital Asset Engagement Letter is just uh to review. Establish our contract with um, um they do our capital asset. Um every year you have to do a capital asset report, basically give that to the state, so Peterson's been doing that with us. For a couple of years, I believe, I know they did it last year, so that's all this letter is just to uh reengage them for this next year.
And the dollar amount again was nine fifty?
Nine fifty, how is that compared to last year? I don't have that properly. Um I didn't even know. No, I don't have the, I'll be there. If you just got me a protect from our, you know, revenues.
And can we have a motion to approve the Peterson Capital Asset Engagement, so Nathan can move forward?
This is a parental motion to approve the Peterson Capital Asset Engagement.
Thank you, and a second?
This is Dan, I'll second that.
Wonderful, um all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Nathan, you can go ahead and reach out to Peterson and if you could follow up with George on that.
Sure.
That would help comparison, that's great. And Nathan, I think you're up again with the voice system contract.
Yeah, Voice Systems is our uh accounting software program and company that we use, uh it is up for renewal this year, the total uh renewal. Amount is five thousand eight seventy, um that is gonna be coming out of the general fund, more specifically of account number. One three eight three point zero zero zero. So I just put that up.
Nathan, this is an annual.
Yeah. And they do a great job, they have really good customer support. I'm pretty happy with it.
And this is part of the Keystone?
Yeah, yeah. Voice is everything I use every day.
I have a motion to approve the voice system contract for Nathan.
This is Brett, I'll make that motion to approve the voice system contract.
Thank you, and a second?
This is Dan, I'll second that.
Wonderful, we have a motion on the table to approve the voice system contract for fifty-eight seventy as Nathan presented, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion carries, Nathan, you can use this word with your mouth.
Thank you.
Now we'll get to the wastewater easement, I I got somebody sitting right here, so I wanted to move him up on the agenda apparently. Robert, it's all yours.
Yes, um I don't know how much I actually involved with these, but I've got a lot pretty heavy on this one, um Mr. Webster. Would like to add on to his existing house, um but. Uh in its place where he wants to do an addition, we have an easement that exists, so. Tonight, uh there's a ordinance or a resolution that's being presented where. Basically, it's gonna resolve uh the existing easement and then uh put in a new permanent and temporary easement. And the establishment of a new uh grinder pump station um closer to the road, so. Uh do you want me to read it or, I don't know, where do you want me to go from here?
Read it.
Uh so the resolution number is gonna be thirteen twenty-three authorization for execution of release of wastewater utility easement. Whereas the town of Clear Lake, Indiana Town uh periodically receives and requests for connection. To a relocation of and connections to the town's wastewater utility system and whereas any connection to the town's wastewater. Utility system requires approval from the town and constitutes a binding agreement. The legal owner of the property requesting the connection and the town and whereas any release. Of the wastewater utilities that requires approval from the town and extinguisher for binding agreement between the legal owner of the property of and the town. And whereas Nancy C. Webster and Robert W. Webster. Um had a request to permission to relocate the Webster's grinder. And the laterals from their current location to the new location of Webster's same property as their. Oh, sorry, same property at their own expense in order to accommodate the remodel of their current residence and whereas the Webster's have agreed. To and will execute a new wastewater utility easement uh permanent and temporary in favor. Of the town or new location of these facilities. Prior to the execution of any release of wastewater utility easement or the existing easement. Being more fully described in the office stupid county recorder in the record book. Uh two thirty page four forty, whereas the town council president and its son executive is the appropriate. Oh, is the appropriate officer to execute the release of sanitary sewer easement on behalf of the town. Scroll, I'm sorry. Therefore, now therefore be resolved that the president of the town, the council shall be. And is hereby authorized to actually execute the release of sanitary sewer easement for the town upon receiving the wastewater utility easement. With a new location of the grinder and a laterals to be installed on the Webster's property. It be be it further resolved that the resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage. Uh resolution adopted on this blank day September twenty-third. I don't think I have to do the rest, I think.
Any questions uh from the council members?
I am very clear. Guy, did you get out? Okay, yeah, okay, everything, Robert.
Do you have a couple visits, lots of conversations? And I would like to make a motion to open it up for public comment.
I'll go second it.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a motion on the table to open for public comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, open to the public, yes, that's right.
I really don't have much to add at this point, um I I do appreciate the fact that we got it done tonight. Because it got us back on schedule for construction standpoint, which uh was in jeopardy. Uh I am sorry that having to move the grinder um. From a place that I originally didn't want it to be, but. But that for a discussion another time, um. That's all.
Hey, anybody else in the public? Hearing none?
I would make a motion to close public comment.
We have a second?
George, I'll second it.
Thank you, a motion on the table to close public comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
And make a motion to suspend. Read only by title.
This is George, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion on the table to read by title only, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Um Clear Lake Resolution Number thirteen twenty-three authorization for execution of release of wastewater utility easement.
And would make a motion then to um. To accept the uh res- the wastewater utility easement uh resolution, what was the number again?
Thirteen thirteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, thirteen one. Thirteen dash one twenty-three as written.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Oh, I'm sorry.
Would be correct, with the addition of thirteen added to twenty-three.
Is that on on that?
When we're looking at, it doesn't have it listed.
It don't have it.
Yes, so I gotta be on the motion to, yeah, approve with correction of thirteen added to twenty-two.
And we have a corrected motion on the table, do we have a second?
Oh, seven.
Great, uh motion is on the table, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Thanks, everybody, for the work on that, sounds like we had a big team then. Brent, we're on the unfinished business, back to the golf carts. Still giving.
Okay, so we have discussed the both the. Golf cart and parking ordinances that Lake Council worked together to come to a consensus on the verbiage. So moving forward, I would like to read ordinance number twenty-three dash eleven. And ordinance to amend and restate Clear Lake Ordinance two thousand and nine dash six as amended. Regulating the use and registration of golf carts within the town of Clear Lake. Whereas Clear Lake Ordinance. Two thousand and nine dash six, which regulates the use and registration of golf carts in the town of Clear Lake, was adopted November ninth, two thousand and nine. And was amended by Clear Lake Ordinance two thousand and ten dash oh four, adopted July twelfth, two thousand and ten. The golf cart ordinance and whereas. The town council desires to amend and restate provisions of the golf cart ordinance, including the provisions for penalties and, excuse me. Or penalties for violations they're under. Now therefore be over date by the town council of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana. One, the purpose of this ordinance is to provide the regulation of use and registration of golf carts within the corporate limits of the town of Clear Lake. Definition, for purposes of this ordinance, the following terms shall have definitions provided. Financial responsible, A, financial responsibility. Shall have the meaning given in the Indiana Code nine dash twenty-five dash four dash one. As quiz is now read, now reads or is subsequently amended. B, golf cart shall be defined as a four-wheeled motor vehicle. Origin- originally and specifically intended. To transport one or more individuals and golf clubs for the purpose of playing golf. Public street shall be defined as all property dedicated for intended for public highway, freeway, or roadway purposes. Or subjected to public easements therefore. D, registration certificate. Shall be defined as a certificate issued by the town of Clear Lake Clerk Treasurer. Signifying all initial requirements of golf cart registration have been satisfied. E, slow-moving vehicle. Shall have the meaning given in the Indiana Administrative Code two oh five I A C one dash one. As it now reads or subsequently amended. Three, it shall be unlawful to operate a golf cart on any public street within the corporate limits of the town of Clear Lake. Except as specified, specifically authorized by this ordinance. Four, any golf cart operated on a public street within the corporate limits of the town of Clear Lake shall be registered. With the town of Clear Lake shall pay a registration fee as provided herein and shall comply with all requirements of this ordinance. Registration forms shall be available at the town of uh Clear Lake Town Hall. Any regi- registration fee shall be paid to the clerk, Clear Lake Clerk Treasurer. Registration fees shall be as follows, registration, or excuse me. Five, registration fee shall be as follows, A, registration, which shall be valid for two calendar years from the date of the. Issuance of the registered certificate for a fee of forty dollars. B, temporary registration, which may be provided for a period of time not to exceed seven consecutive days for a fee of fifteen dollars. Six. The then current registration certificate shall be maintained and displayed on. Or about the golf cart at all times, that the golf cart is in operation on any public street within the town of Clear Lake. Set up at the time of registration, the registrant, owner. Or operator of the golf cart shall provide the vehicle identification number. The application registration fee and proof of financial responsibility as defined herein. Eight, no person may operate a golf cart on a public street within the town of Clear Lake without coverage of financial responsibility. As defined herein. Prior to issuance of the regi- registration certificate, the golf cart shall be inspected by the town marshal. Or deputy town marshal to ensure that the golf cart complies with all the requirements of this ordinance. Ten, all golf carts operated on public streets within the corporate limits of the town of Clear Lake. Shall be operated pursuant to the terms of this ordinance. Shall obey all rules of the road and traffic regulations of the state of Indiana and the town of Clear Lake and shall display the following. A, a registration certificate issued by the town of Clear Lake as required herein. B, a slow-moving vehicle emblem as defined herein. C, if the golf cart is operated after sunset and before sunrise, it must display headlights, which shall be mounted in the front of the golf cart. And at least one tail lamp mounted on the rear. That when lighted emits a red light, each of which shall be plainly visible from a distance of five hundred feet. Eleven, the operator of the golf cart on a public street within the corporate limits of the town of Clear Lake must have an all-drive driver's license. Issued by the state of Indiana or any of the states of the United States of America. Twelve, golf cart shall be equipped equipped with a rear view mirror. Thirteen, the number of occupants of a golf cart in operation on a public street within the corporate limits of the town of Clear Lake. Shall be limited to the lesser number of persons from whom the factory seating is installed on the golf cart. Fourteen, the operators and occupants shall be properly seated at all times and no part of the body of the operator. Or occupants shall extend the outside perimeter of the golf cart while the golf cart is in operation. Except that, the operator shall use proper traffic hand signals when required. Fifteen, a violation of the provisions of this ordinance shall be considered a class C infraction, which shall revolve, result in fines and penalties as follows. First offense, one hun- uh first offense, one hundred dollar fine, second offense, two hundred dollar fine. Each additional offense, three hundred dollar fine. Additionally, if three or more violations of this ordinance occur within one calendar year. Registration of the golf cart, either annually or daily, shall be suspended and the owner of the operator, owner or operator of the golf cart. Shall not be eligible for another registration for one calendar year from the date of this suspension. Sixty, the fees or fines collected under this ordinance shall be deposited in the town of Clear Lake General Fund. Be it further ordered that this, that an emergency exists requiring immediate effectiveness and this amended and restated ordinance. Subdue in full force and effect. From and after its passage by the town council and posting in one place in each of the districts of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana. Passed and adopted by the town of Clear Lake, or town council of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana. There's a blank day of twenty-two.
Yeah, I can see the one typo, of course, it's the last line where it says be posting in one place. The O S I T, there's an extra I. I didn't catch it all the time.
Ten times over.
I agree, yeah, we've all seen the, I didn't notice it till just now.
Oh, we're gonna touch it, then back on. Yeah, one on the last, uh last line. It's state of of the United States of America, and you read it, it's states, do you want it plural?
No, state can remain any of the state, well, no, it should say states probably. Make it more correct, grammatically correct.
Yeah, sort of.
So posting the last line, correction would be posting the last lines and.
Correction on the.
But.
Um there might be another one, I think.
That's okay, there might, we might be able to correct it. No, it's not open to the public yet.
She has a correction, I think, grammatical, so let's, uh I'd like to make a motion to open it to public comments.
I'll second that, like, then.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we'll open it up for a public comment specific to corrections on.
Well, I think it should read, um. Or any state of the United States of.
Oh, so take out of the, yes, so just right of the, instead of making states plural. Okay, and yes.
Can I make a question about another part of it? Sure, so under definitions, B. If, I'm wondering if that's broad enough, there are a lot of golf carts showing up, or carts. Showing up that clearly never were intended to be golf carts.
I'll add that it's side by sides, so these side by sides which aren't golf carts.
They're not included in this one.
And side by sides are mandated, they're managed by the states, but that's, that's fair because that questions come up before and there are a lot, so. Pardon me, Chris.
No, we're gonna say, sorry.
Oh, okay, anymore, um, from the public? Yeah, um, could I have a motion to close public comment?
This is Brent, um, make a motion to close. George, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion on the table to close public comment on the golf cart policy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries, okay, back to council. Brent, did you have something you wanted to add on this?
I think we got everything.
Brent.
Nothing other than to clarify the correction, is we want eleven, number eleven to states. Or ordinance, valid driver's license issued by the state of Indiana or. Any state of the United States of America.
That correction and then the last.
Posting instead of whatever is, that is pronounced as.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so I would like to make a motion for the second reading to be by title only.
George, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion on the table to have the second reading by title only, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
So ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eleven, an ordinance to amend. And restate Clear Lake ordinance two thousand and nine dash zero six as amended. Regulating the use and registration of golf carts within the town of Clear Lake. I would like to make a secondary motion to pass this ordinance with corrections. Number eleven, we will state. The operator of a golf cart on a public street. Within the corporation, corporate limits of the town of Clear Lake must have a valid driver's license. Issued by the state of Indiana or any state of the United States of America. And with correcting the spelling of posting at the, it be further ordered.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Here, we have a motion on the table to approve with corrections. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eleven, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
All right, on to the parking orders. Okay, ordinance, wait, let me get a drink first. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twelve, ordinance amending. Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash eighteen, which established parking of regulator.
Your, your second ordinance in the, right before two thousand sixteen is spelled wrong.
Well, aren't we all becoming shit?
I'll check, should have gone both of them. Uh, anyways, ordinance amending ordinance two thousand sixteen dash eighteen, which establish. Parking regulations upon the roads and streets within the town of Clear Lake, Indiana. Whereas ordinance two thousand and sixteen dash eighteen adopted on January ninth, two thousand seventeen. Which established an ordinance regulating parking on the roads and streets within the town of Clear Lake as permitted by Indiana code. Nine dash twenty-one dash one dash three, and whereas a council wishes to amend ordinance two thousand and sixteen. Now therefore, it be ordained by the town of Clear, town council of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana, that section one. It shall be unlawful to stop, stand, or park a vehicle. Or trailer on any road or street. Or park a vehicle on or across a sidewalk, private or public driveway in the town of Clear Lake. Except as herein provided, A, in connection with residential services, including but not limiting. Not limited to landscaping, mowing, or deliveries. Temporary parking on one side of the roadway is permitted for up to one hour. So long as free passage of vehicle or traffic is permitted on the opposite side of the road or street. And appropriate signage or temporary traffic cones are placed for the safe travel of other motors. Upon the street or, or the road or street. B, in connection with any utility maintenance or residential construction, temporary parking. On one side of the roadway is permitted for up to four hours, so long as the passage of the vehicle, vehicular traffic. Is permitted on the opposite side of the road or street, and appropriate signage, temporary traffic cones. Are placed for the safe travel of other motors upon the road or street. For any period in excess of four hours, a daily permit shall be secured from the town. Through the office of the clerk treasurer at a cost of fifty dollars per day. But in no event shall stopping or parking be permitted before sunrise or after sunset. C, in the event that a total closure of the road or street is required, at least twenty-four hours in advance. Of the utility or contractor shall advise Steuben County nine one one and the Fremont Fire Department. Of the intended closure and shall also be required to post additional signage advising. The motoring public of any required detour route. Section two, any person violating any provision of this chapter shall be subject to the following. A, a written warning for the first offense, B, a fine of seventy-five dollars. For a violation within twelve months of the first offense. C, a fine of one hundred and fifty dollars for the third violation within twelve months of the first offense. And D, a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for each. Subsequential violation within twelve months of the first offense. The fines for any violation shall be paid to the clerk treasurer and deposited in the town of Clear Lake General Fund. C, the provisions of this ordinance shall be enforced by the Clear Lake Police Department. D, if a violation of this ordinance presents immediate danger to the public determined by the officer. The Clear Lake Police Department is hereby authorized to secure services. Of a properly licensed vehicle towing operator on the Steuben County Communication Record Rotation. And remove any vehicle found in violation of this ordinance, and the cost shall be. At the expense of the owner of any vehicle which is towed, three, the town. Council declares that an emergency ex- exists, section three, excuse me, the town council. Where's? Yeah, the town council declares that an emergency exists requiring immediate effectiveness, this is doubled. That needs to be pulled out, section three needs to be pulled out of there. Remove section. Be it further ordained that an emergency exists requiring its immediate effectiveness and amended and restating ordinance shall be in full force and effect. From and after the passage of the town council and posting in one place in each district of the town of. Of Clear Lake, Indiana, passed and adopted by the town council of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana. This blank day of blank twenty twenty-three.
And Christine needs corrected on that last.
So. Double section. Okay. So I would make a, well, is there any general counsel discussing, discussion?
No, not.
Other than the two grammatic errors.
Press anything.
You have one question, I ran it twice this year, I think it would be covered. We've had the public services place dumpsters in the roadway at least twice this year. Um, second time, I think they moved them within an hour, I heard I called them.
I called them and I said, they said, well, we don't have a dumpster there, I said, when you come looking through your dumpster, it builds tiny goals. Clear Lake, uh, last time that happened, it cost us like a thousand bucks.
Yeah, because the first time. Didn't have anybody cover it quickly, so I totally pounded it. It cost him about a thousand dollars, so I think it would be covered, uh, but.
Think that that would be covered as well. I will say, in an hour and ten minutes, that dumpster was out of the way.
Moved by Republic, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I mean.
So, I think it would be covered. It would be classified as a vehicle or a trailer, but it's obstructing the roadway and.
And it's in conduct, connection with construction.
Yeah.
So it should be covered in one B, and that would be my interpretation.
Mine as well. All right, with nothing from the council, I would make a motion to open for the public comment. I'll second that.
We have a motion on the table to open for public comment on the parking ordinance, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, anybody in the public have questions or comments on the parking ordinance, present the essence for some.
I just have one, like in the very first paragraph. I, I guess because it says. Uh, it's unlawful to stop, stand, park, or any vehicle or trailer upon road or street. Or park vehicle on or across the sidewalk, private or public driveway. I mean, shouldn't I clarify that a private owner park properly on driveway?
So what's that, is it, um. Like you're parked in the roadway, blocking somebody's driveway, and you, even if you fall underneath a. Service vehicle or utility maintenance vehicle, but let's say they, they stop in front of your driveway. And prohibits you from pointing into your driveway, even into your garage, we can totally pound that vehicle then. Oh, and we'd have to let it sit there for four hours before having it in your garage.
Right, but so if you.
But it also included being in the private. Well, if you're the private citizen, if you park on the street blocking your driveway, you're parked in the street. Which you're not allowed to do, you can, as long as you're in your driveway, park right next to the road, that's fine, you can't park in the roadway though.
I just, I just thought, private, just across the sidewalk, private or public driveway, so if you're on here. Doesn't really clarify whether you're in the street and just, I like it to be clear, so. Can't mess with each other, just to park in your own driveway to say you're gonna get a fine.
I think the sidewalks for communities that actually do have sidewalks or whatever, that's why it's installed. Right, so that, that way it limits the passage for, uh, pedestrian traffic as well.
No, we have. Private driveway, so everybody has private driveway, it doesn't really clarify if you're in the street or not, and I get what you're saying, I just. I don't like seeing opportunity for people to.
Anybody else in the public audience have anything? Brian?
Yeah, Brian, one were eight point two South Coeway Drive, uh, so, does this apply as well to, I mean. Any blocking of the road at all, just if you're a foot or two out into the street, does this apply in that situation?
It could, yes, that's why we do the warnings a lot, they're asking you to move your vehicles.
Yeah, there, there's, there have been recently, I mean, this last year. I noticed the, uh, there was construction down the road from me. They, they had a vehicle that was overhanging into the street, they had a red cone parked in front of it, to signify they were there, but. It was there for a good minute or two, and. There's other times you have cars that hang out into the street a bit, they know around corners. Or, you know, the big, um, trailer hitches hanging out the back of a pickup truck out into the street, which can be hazardous. This would, you would be able to enforce that under this ordinance?
Yep, yes.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Nice job, nice to talk, uh, thank you.
Anything else from the public? Hearing nuns, because we have a motion to oppose public.
Brent, I'll make a motion to close.
We have a motion, we have a second.
George, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion on the table to post public comment, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Motion carries.
No, you're fine, I'll make a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve by title only for the second reading. I'll second that.
We have a motion on the table with a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries, go ahead, Brent.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve. Ordinance amending the ordinance two thousand sixteen dash eighteen, which established parking of regulations. Upon the roads and streets within the town of Clear Lake, Indiana. I would make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three. Dash twelve, correcting the spelling of ordinance in the first paragraph. Removing the duplicate section three and correcting the spelling of posting in the final paragraph.
We have a motion on the table, is there a second?
George, I'll second the motion with corrections.
We have a motion on the table, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Right, great job, um, and I, like Guy, Chris, and Robert, I know Dan, you even.
Those are glad.
I mean, it was, so.
It was an example of council working together to come up with something that everybody agreed with.
Absolutely, we're talking about it, thanks. So now, I think we're gonna turn it over, uh, to Guy on the grinder quote.
So we had studied more grinders that I felt were being, felt were. Worthy of, uh, getting remanufactured, so I sent them up to C E M a few weeks ago, they tore them down. They sent me back a detailed list of the parts all need, if anyone wants to see it, I can show it to you. Uh, the average price for these grinders to have them remanufactured is two thousand and ten dollars and sixty-one cents each. Price of a new grinder is three thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars. Which would give us a savings of one thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-eight cents. Uh, per grinder over buying new ones. The ones that I have had them to repair or remanufacture over the last six, eight months. Have been, we've had no trouble with them, everything's tested just the same as a new grinder when they come back. Uh, so the total amount of repairs for those seven would be fourteen thousand seventy-four dollars and thirty-one cents. And I checked with Nathan and he says we have the money available.
Right.
What was the fire cost, uh, of rebuild? I can, I think April you had some grinders.
They were just, I want to say they were a hundred, hundred fifty dollars less than that. Somewhere around there, they were around.
Around a hundred, I'd say they're fourteen.
It, well, it depended on which grinder it was, some of these only cost like, I think the cheapest one was like nine hundred, I think. Not going to do that, I don't have that paper in front of me, and then the most expensive one was like twenty-one hundred. By the time you averaged them all out, it made sense to have the rebuild.
You're not rebuilding any of that original batch that we first put in, it's our, our new grinder.
These are the, I won't, we do not. The E ones, we do not rebuild, these are all liberties, and the, actually, the very first original liberties we put in. We aren't rebuilding those because of the way they were designed, they're very prone to getting water damage. And there's not really any way to change that, but the new design ones, I figure if they're under. They're around that ten-year mark, eight to ten-year mark is my cutoff point for getting a rebuild. So, yeah, okay.
This is outs- outside of scope of what we're talking about, but as you dispose of grinders, when we get to your report going forward, if you could. Put the grinders that we're scrapping out, that we're dumping, so to speak, okay, okay, we'll talk a little more when you get around to it.
But it's, uh, could this be accrued tonight, Guy, this puts you in a position to having a backlog. Uh, how many? Uh, twenty twenty-four within the thirty.
You got twenty-two right now. You got twenty-two right now.
I guess we'd be too long in, so that would put me at just under thirty. Which is kind of the, of all the, what we use, I wouldn't use in here, so we would have twenty twenty-four needs covered for the best part. Providing nothing, mother nature does nothing stupid to us.
All right.
I was gonna say, good job, I'm trying to say this word.
We have a motion to approve the grinder quote as presented.
This is George, I moved that we approved the, uh, grinder pump, uh, that, that we have for fourteen thousand and seventy-five dollars and nine dollars.
We have a motion for a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table to approve the grinder quote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Uh, you're good to go. Now we're gonna move to the monthly reports. I believe Nathan, you're up first.
Yeah, everybody's heard from you now. I have the revenue, fund, and appropriation reports on my office. Uh, if you have any questions, you can agree, let me know.
Anybody have any questions for Nathan? No, okay. Chris?
Well, another August, we're total one hundred and twenty-one hours, uh, drove five hundred and twenty-eight miles in Durango at fifteen hours on a boat. Uh, the police department investigated three cases. The sheriff's office investigated two cases within the town and six within the township of Clear Lake. Uh, we had three golf cart inspections, seven vehicle inspections, uh, nine boat contacts, and two vehicle contacts. Uh, radar street signs on Penn Drive and South Clear Lake driver back in operation and are up, and then the radar sign uh, for North Bound East Clear Lake Drive just got delivered yesterday. Um, it should be put up tomorrow, please. Um, for the case we investigated, there was a one rescue and two thefts. Sheriff's Department handled all armed, and one domestic in the town, and one juvenile problem, one property damage crap, two welfare checks, one first-world injury crap, and one dog problem.
Any comment written this up?
Um, the theft, one theft was the street, or the radar finally. Crap and on.
I was saying, oh, okay.
It's actually found later.
Yeah.
Yep.
At the fire channel, so, so, okay.
Someone might have got their call back, Nathan.
I did notice, uh, in the radar, um, metrics that, uh, were everything's around twenty-five or four or less.
Yeah. Yeah, and I did, yeah, um, I did, I don't know if I can get back, but, uh, there is a, uh, warning sign prior to the curve, uh, on Southern City North there that says the speed limit has dropped down to twenty-five, so that they actually, pretty exciting, so.
Didn't we put that up?
We asked, we asked for that, you know, trying to look for solutions to slow the traffic down because there was. Going into the landslide. You got approval from the county to put it in, I think.
Yeah.
We paid for it.
And we paid for it, we had to get approval from the county.
We didn't really see any, not effective, but.
Right. We didn't see the fact that all that speed sign out there. Once that speed sign got there, then people slowed down.
It does have an effect, uh, it's like we're traffic out before. And it does, I can tell as soon as they come around the curve, they start seeing, they start dropping the speed a lot.
Somebody was pulled over this morning.
Yeah, that was Rex.
That's somebody's.
Yeah.
Yes. And I have heard feedback, um, what is it, same point area? That that was good, that somebody's been up there.
Yeah.
Anything else for Chris? No, all right, um, I'll turn it over a break for the fire department report.
All right, the town of Clear Lake had a tentable incidents, including four mutual aids. We had four medical, uh, assistants, one firearm, and one water rescue that they worked on with our police department. Uh, let's see here, for fire department within the Clear Lake Township, there was one liplessness and one vehicle accident with injury. Uh, you can see that we have also discussed the fire contract that did get approved from the town of Fremont this evening, and the town of Clear Lake approved our portion of it in our town meeting. So that has been taken care of now and finally fully resolved.
Any questions for Brian on the fire? All righty, we'll turn it over to Robert for your report.
Um, all right, so I had six for the year, twenty twenty-nine, or sorry, six for the month, twenty-nine for the year. You'll see the numbers kind of look weird, but that's because uh, everything in black is for, um, August, everything in blue is September, so that way you guys can see what's been going on for next month's report. One after the fact, um, which is, uh, for a patio that was installed, and then, uh, I had two more. I O P's not required, um, letters that I sent out, plan commission meeting. Uh, the next meeting was at eleven, six, uh, at seven o'clock. Um, the only case that we have, uh, filed for excuse me, for that meeting is the postponed, um, rezoning case twenty twenty-three dash zero one. Uh, for our reason for non-careful, our different commercial is single get essential, so, um, the next B Z A is ten.
I was looking, uh, guy.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I was looking at your, uh, metrics as well, uh, Robert, I noted that you had seventeen open permits, like.
Hmm.
Um, do you expect those to be, are they, I don't know, like state they're in, are they gonna go into the winter?
Um, some of them are, not all of them, um, since since the metrics of our poster have actually closed somehow, um, got clarification from a few residents to see where they're at on the process, and, uh, um, so I, but there's still a lot of, like those big homes up on the point, those are still going. Uh, I still have some landscape stuff that needs to be done by some applicants, so I don't close them out until they're completely done, even though they're done with the county that I've done with us, so. Um, they haven't fulfilled their obligations to their O P hundred percent yet, so I'm still working on making sure that they do that, especially before it gets cold. So I should see more.
Let you know, there has definitely been action on the used property.
Yeah, I go by.
Last, okay, over, over the last month, they've been.
I haven't been by this week, but last week they had a little, they're, they're, I'm sure they're gonna get ready to start doing siding or something.
Yeah, windows were being installed. I get door got, may have been installed as well, so.
Yeah, that's, that's nice to see that going on too.
I have a question on case thirty-three. If there're gonna be a drain in that drive? I, I just see some of the new driveways and some have the drains in them, and then other ones don't.
So Brian and Tiffany Woodward are not installing a drain. They, uh, they have enough grass area to the east of their property that we felt that a drain wasn't necessary. Uh, it's really flat right there, so they're gonna slope it to their large grass area, so it permeates the ground naturally. So.
Does the drain that was in the driveway being?
They, uh, they don't, they don't have it, right? Oh, wait, wait, sorry.
There was.
Wait, I'm on one, just second, I'm thinking, uh, seventeen, um, Brian and Tiffany.
Woodward.
Yes, they have their drain, they, they're keeping their drainage, so everything is gonna be pitched to their existing drain system, sorry.
No.
Yeah, man, so where's that drain going? Where's the drain?
Uh, it connected to the existing, uh, goes to the channel.
Yeah. Across the road? In front of it?
Yep.
Through their existing drain or? That won't be capping into the new drain pipes going, I don't believe, sorry, okay?
No, from what I've been told, they use the existing system, okay, however, so. So they're just gonna, they're gonna pitch it more appropriately and.
They don't have that problem, as I said.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Over time, when you get to public here.
Anything else for Robert? Thank you, Robert. Guy, you're up with the superintendent's report.
So for, I had a total of a hundred and sixty hours, Brody had eighty hours. Uh, I had two road cut permits, zero demo permits, eight letters of non-objection, um, the sewer department. We had ninety-six locates, three alarm calls, uh, we replaced one grinder. Uh, we repaired two, set up ten. I have ten set up and ready to go. I saw, we just received our shipment of grinders the other day. They're still boxed and on the pallets. Um, our average daily flow was sixty-three, seven fifty-four. The sewer truck mileage was two hundred and eighty-six for the month, and, uh, dump truck mileage was a hundred and thirty-seven.
Any questions for Guy, uh, Nathan?
Anybody else? I, I have a, uh, just a comment, uh, uh, Guy and I had an opportunity to meet with a recycler, uh, earlier in the month, and, uh, looking at these scrap pumps, thinking that there was a gold mine to be had. And, uh, the, uh, resolution at the end, after he evaluated what we had, and you take all the plastic off and all the other minutia that's, that's, uh, has no value, uh, every year, one of seventy-five bucks for the truck load, so. It really wasn't worth, they did not wanna bring a truck here and try to dispose of them, of course, there's just no value.
Yeah, it wouldn't pay for the fuel and our time to take them, yeah.
So the way we're disposing of them would just continue. But for that point, uh, going forward, as you scrap them, just so you can keep inventory, keep, keep, uh, count of the pumps, if you uh, just posting scrap, the number of pumps grabbed, okay, if you would, thank you.
Right, Nathan, you had a question?
Yeah, like a very serious note, how many hours is Alan within?
Well, she's been a week and a half now.
Okay. Guy got a new dog. Been coming around with them everywhere you go. Her name's Al.
So we'll meet Alan, and we'll, we'll kinda Tom shirt on.
No, she's actually, it's actually been kind of nice. She's, you know, it's something for everybody that sees her, you know. She's. Yeah, she, she just kind of picks up everybody's morale in the mornings. It makes everybody happy that she comes running and says, hi, how are you?
She's a wonderful addition to the home.
That's great. Anything else for Guy?
I was looking at the, uh, flow metrics, uh, and this, uh, this past August was the largest August that we've had since we've started.
Did you drive around late munching?
But I'm particularly sensitive to that because that's, that's just use of the system. I don't know if it's gonna settle out. Uh, so just keep our eye on that.
Yeah.
And Dan with the metrics, just so I, I think that was in the first week of the month. So usually it's initiated by Chris and stuff, when Chris sends me and then Guy sends me his stuff, and then but it's almost always from within that first week, but always ready by the.
Usually I'm relying on Chris in the morning and saying, hey, I sent my metrics, so. Robert, and I'm like, oh, yeah, I'd rather do.
So it's a race, nobody wants to do that, I guess, huh?
Always me, but.
Yeah, Guy, that being said, you, you take a daily reading, don't you?
Yes, of our fault. That's how I get my monthly. We keep a track of how many hours each farm runs, how many hours the generator runs, um, and all of that, so, okay.
All right, um, council member reports. And maybe Dan, if we could go to Kathy's question on the roads and the Lakeview road process.
We can do that as our general.
Okay, or we can do that. Council member reports, anything?
So I just, uh, I'd like to mention that the road committee, uh, cleared its initial release of the town of Clear Lake road policy. Uh, it's been distributed to council members, uh, with the request that, uh, comments back, um, at the end of this month. Our intention is to incorporate those, uh, comments and then get it out for public viewing. And then in October, uh, look for council's approval to, uh, release it.
Thank you, Nathan. Anything else, George?
I have nothing.
Brian? All right, hearing nothing else from the council member, well, um, open it up, Ber.
Just one, I just was gonna make one comment about the, um, road construction, um, we're, we're largely following, uh, that draft, um, uh, policy that, uh, council is reviewing. Um, I'm very pleased with, uh, really, uh, very few issues, uh, that have come up. The concerns that have been raised have been able to be, uh, have been addressed and in a, um, and have not resulted in really any substantive changes, so. I know Todd's spending a lot of time, uh, with his daily discussions with API and Guy. Appreciate guys' efforts as well uh, on that, and I'd also like to say thanks to Jen, um, who has, uh, supported us with, uh, even coming in on weekends, um, to post, um, every each letter when we have significant information, yeah, so.
No, and I think it's, the residents appreciate that too.
So it's, um, it's, I think it's, uh, you know, fingers crossed, I think, uh, we'll continue to see a successful event. Uh, there are some lessons learned that we're collecting along the way. Uh, and we'll review those at the end of the day and collect others.
We would expect nothing less from you. Less important for all of us. Okay, general discussion? Council?
Yes, I have one. Uh, unless anybody would, any of the other council members would disagree for transparency to the public, should we receive any notices for a public meeting be posted on our bulletin board? I would request that Nathan and Jennifer get a reach alert out to the community, so they're aware of it as well. Unless anybody's got any objections, I think it'd be good for knowledge of the general public.
Yeah, that's what we did for this meeting, we went out on private, uh, one of the general public, you know, we were talking about the budget, so.
And that, but that would be for any requests that you get to post for a public meeting. That's great, granted.
And I know Clear Lake Association had asked when their annual meeting comes up, if we could post that on reach alert, so.
And Jen and I just actually went through the reach contract again. I know me and Jordan went through it once, but she was curious about how many orders we can send up, so I got her that contract again to this, so. But she would have given up that to you, so that's good.
Yeah.
Taking a lot of each alert that she posts out, you know.
Well, and she's got a, uh, it's like a metric, it's, you know, a belt, a curve that shows between the high and you, as you can expect when we don't have storms in the winter. There's not a lot of utilization. You can tell in the winter when it, when there's a storm, because there's a big, you know, bubble on that one, but she also monitors that way, and we are well under where we need to be, but I think the discussion with Jen this week was we don't wanna have too many, because we don't want people to say, I'm, I'm not looking at this, or to opt out, because sometimes it's very relevant, um, especially if roads are gonna be closed and things of that nature, so. Anything else from council under general dis?
When, when we set that contract up, we had the, uh, specific discussion about the limits that were in the language of that contract, and, uh, they said they don't impose limits, but they had to in case there's bots and things of that nature that show up and, and just really.
And we're so far from it. I mean, we might feel like we are, but the number, you're right, Dan, is so, I mean, I would hope we would never get there, because that means we would be getting like three a day.
Yeah.
Or something ludicrous like that, but no. Right. Thanks, Brian. Anybody on council have anything else under general discussion? Public, Dan, you wanna address Kathy's question now, or you and Todd could address it, however.
We just stated the question, Kathy.
I was just curious if you're going to do the same thing on Lakeview that you're doing on some of the street projects.
Okay.
That is tearing up the whole.
The, the, the short answer is yes, but it was based off of, uh, analysis of the corings that we've done on that road and their ability to support, um, uh, the weight of the vehicles. So it requires us to, to replace the sand that's underneath that road with, with the stone. I don't know if you wanna add anything.
Todd, anything to add?
Then that was prevented, guessed with everybody at that time. That's the route that was up here to go.
Anybody have any other? Anybody have any other questions, comments?
And you know, I'll just, I'll just say as we go around the way the process is to um, look at corings that we have or do corings in advance to inform that decision uh before he does uh any kind of preliminary uh conceptual planning that we might, that might come in front of council, so. Uh, we put that into that uh draft process that we're looking at.
What uh regarding the road policy, uh, is it our policy not to allow personal drainage into any of the town's roadway drainage system?
Yeah, what we wrote in there is that anybody who, any resident who is interested in tying into a uh, a town owned um drainage asset uh needs to come in front of council for approval in advance.
We've had none so far.
Correct.
Okay, and Todd, you, as, as you're inspecting, you're looking out for that pirated one.
Cover of darkness.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then as, as we go forward, that, I don't know, it's uh West Clear Lake from seven hundred to the bridge is gonna be the next section. Yeah, uh, and we still have that water issue, and I'm just curious, uh, I don't know this number, so I'll just have to use his name, uh, in Follins House. Uh, is that going to be addressed uh in a fashion that the homeowner is gonna be?
Yes, I find with the uh, the, the swale system being uh put in place, uh, we'll address that.
Okay. Um, is there's adequate uh capacity to take the water from the swale to the lake?
Yeah, um, some of the swales will entrap water.
Um, slow it down.
And then others, the other network of swales will slow it down because uh capacity of a pipe isn't just by area, it is slope and uh and the speed in which the water uh enters it. And so the soil system, we're thinking resolve it in its entirety. Um, but that said, if it doesn't, it really falls on the uh, the owner of that property to resolve whatever residual might be left.
Even though, I guess he had recourse against his neighbors that are sending water down uh off of their properties.
Yeah, but I, I think that we've resolved.
Okay, yeah, I know the two uh lookouts that you gave, uh, slope, that's pretty flat there, we're almost at water level, and the diameter of the pipe, it's not significant at all.
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay.
And it's been interesting. I've been trying to wait for a rainstorm, because there's some engineering study. Yeah, yeah, it's been well over.
Just wait. Okay. Well, Dan will be determined when we get the rain, we'll see him out there.
And last question, uh, we need to install a swale at seven, uh, at West Clear Lake uh from seven fifty to the Ronning Lake Bridge. Uh, have we had any success in uh acquiring that usement?
So that's uh, that's the, the last box to check this week, okay? Um, what preceded that? I can say that the design is, is relatively unchanged.
Hmm, okay.
Um, but uh Todd needed uh some additional, uh actually quite a few. We took quite a few more top, topographical uh collections.
Working down there.
Really, that's, that's partly what, what probably drove the billing that we just uh saw um this week, but effectively what we were, it was an optimization that was, that Todd was undergoing whereby we could ensure that the flow of water was sufficient to make its way into that um um drainage swale. Uh, we have now uh worked with the attorney to put the language together to allow us to ingress and egress onto that area, do the work that we need to do. Um, and we plan to meet with the residents.
Alright, very good. Thank you.
So, hearing nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'd so move.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Who's in favor to adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-eight P M? Signify by saying aye.
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 All those in favor? Oh, we already said everybody's in the post. Hearing none, motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.